I'm gonna call this meeting to order and I'll ask Laura Lee to please call the roll.
Stu Boyd.
Sorry.
Here. Denise Chapman.
Here.
Amy Doran. Dawn Kirk.
Here.
Barbara Cruz.
Here.
Alexandra Lessen.
Here.
Nancy Rumpel.
Here.
Thank you, Laura Lee. We did the pledge at our special meeting, so we don't need to do that, so I'm gonna move on to the approval of the agenda for today, September third. Are there any changes to the agenda for today's study session? Right now, I'll take the motion to approve the agenda.
I'll move.
Thank you, Nancy. And Dawn, Nancy and Dawn. And Laura Lee, please call the roll.
Stu Boyd.
Aye.
Denise Chapman.
Aye.
Amy Doran. Dawn Kirk.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Alexandra Lessen.
Aye.
Nancy Rumpel.
Aye.
And the motion carries. So we will go ahead and start that agenda, beginning with school presentation from Loveland High School. Welcome.
Hi, ladies and gentlemen, how are we? Welcome to Loveland High School, we appreciate it. Uh, my name is Sean Collins, I'm the head of schools for Loveland High School, and I have with me Morelli and Leila. Um, we're gonna talk to you today a little bit about Loveland High School, um, specifically about us being a global, um, world school as far as when it comes to IB, and so, um, we'll start there. So this year's really kicked off, we had a great, amazing start of the year here at Loveland High School. We unveiled our new mascot, matter of fact, we have auditions for our mascot going on right now, his name is Rowdy. Um, he has his own chant already, which is pretty cool. Academically, we've, we've really kicked it off here with all of our trainings and our professional developments that we've had, which has been really super helpful. We have a national champion, which I think you guys got to meet, which is absolutely amazing as well, um, from the speech and debate team. Football team's going off well, like I said, athletics is, is looking really well, um, everything is, um, as far as Loveland is concerned, that part of it, um, I think is, we're, we're doing, um, great things here at Loveland High School. So Loveland High School is a global IB school, um, to talk to you a little bit about that is, we, one of the areas that we have is what's we call the approaches to teaching. Oh, can you go to one more slide? Thank you. Um, they were the duplicates, so I didn't want to. So one of the things we have here, uh, Loveland High School is our approaches to teaching, and you'll notice and recognize a lot of these concepts in here, but we here at Loveland High School are very, very intentional about each one of these processes and each one of these concepts. So for instance, based on inquiry, our teaching is based on the concept of inquiry and trying to help kids, uh, make and try to create their own answers to a lot of these problems that we, that we provide for them, as well as trying to apply these to real world, um, concepts. Uh, the next one is conceptual understanding, um, really kind of understanding and knowing, um, our, um, content at a conceptual level to be able to apply it, um, and be able to understand and, um, be able to work with the concepts that we have at a really super high level, and that's one of the things that we have here at IB, um, is our, our rigor that we have around those, that conceptual understanding. The next one is local and global context. You'll notice as you walk around Loveland High School, if you haven't had a chance, um, we really focus in on making those global contexts for, for students, which is absolutely critical, um, for their success. Our motto here is developing students to be successful in a global community, because that is what we are today. We're no longer just Loveland High School. Our students compete with students all over the world every single day, and that's one of the things that we, we try to make sure that we are preparing our students for, um, as they move forward. One of the other ones that we have is focusing on teamwork and collaboration. Teamwork and collaboration of not only just the students themselves, but also collaboration with, with teachers. One of the things that we do here at Loveland High School, uh, is we have students involved in all of our hiring process. Matter of fact, we're hiring our new mascot, we have students in there right now hiring for our new mascot, um, as well. So, um, that's something that we really take very seriously, is making sure that we're a part of a team and that we're collaborating as much as we possibly can. The next thing is designing and removing barriers to learning. Uh, we're working with CAS and UDL, and that fits in perfect with what we are doing here about removing barriers for students and making sure that we have accessibility across the board for all students. Um, and that is something that IB pushes very strongly as well, um, so it's nice to be able to have our entire district, um, on board when it comes to the same ideas and concepts to the approaches to teaching. And the last one is informed by assessments. Our, our teachers and our students here are, um, the assessments help us drive our understanding in the direction that we need to go, um, and so that is an important piece to not only understanding where our students need to go, but also what they also need to be able to do. Real quick, we have three parts of this, is our, we have a middle years program, which is our nine and tenth grade level, we have our diploma program, and then we have our career related program. I'm gonna keep these relatively short so that the students can talk, um, but I do wanna give a shout out real quick about this. We just got accepted right before we started for our career related program, um, and so that means Loveland High School will have a diploma program at the tenth and eleventh, uh, eleventh and twelfth grade level, as well as the career related program. That means, if you think about career related, just think of it as like the CTE part of IB. And so we're gonna kick it off with robotics and engineering, and then also our consumer science, um, courses will also be part of that. We're gonna flip towards the end if we will, because I'm long-winded and we're gonna let these two here kind of pick it up right there.
Um, hi everyone, so my name's Morelli, um, sorry if I stutter, I'm a little nervous. Um, I've been in IB for, about like since middle school, since I went to Irwin, we had a bunch of like IB involvement. Um, they even used to do a bunch of like, um, IB trade awards every month for students, um, I went a little bit of those, but I was, didn't really know what it was. Um, till sophomore year, they introduced us to the actual IB program here, um, and I decided to like register for the full IB without really knowing what it was. Um, so IB is kind of complex, um, I've been doing it for a year and I'm still like a little bit confused. Sometimes I just don't, I just don't get what it is sometimes, I'm like, why am I doing this? Um, I've taken my first IB test, I've started my ED, and then I've also become a better, better student is what I've noticed. So I am way more organized and I've managed my time a lot better. It's also helping me in like a lot of ways that I didn't know it would. So with the college credit that it has involved, um, I'm really excited to like go to college and be able to like skip classes that I wouldn't be able to without this program. I'm also becoming more of a risk taker, um, I ask a lot more questions in class now, communicate a lot better and work with others a lot more than I used to do. Um, so I'm not saying it's really easy, 'cause it's not, sometimes I feel really frustrated, I feel like I have no time in my day to do a lot of stuff, or I feel like I have to stop doing other things just so I can do my work and get to like finishing it, but it's also challenges me in the way I need to be challenged. Um, since we can still choose what classes we take, um, I don't have to be dragged down, or I don't, don't have to be like get stuck at whatever level everyone else is at, we get to be pushed to our very best, and I think that's something really nice that it does for us, it's like we get to be our best or version of ourselves. Um, another thing is that it has helped me with also understanding what a global thinker is. So a lot of the things I was like, you're becoming a global thinker, and I used to think that was just knowing what the world is and knowing about it, understanding it, but it's a lot more than that, it's knowing the perspectives of everyone around us, um, seeing what other people have faced, what situations they go through in their thought process, and it's also knowing to, first, it's understanding and like thinking about more than just myself, what other people are on me when I solve problems, and second is knowing that I will never truly understand everyone's perspective. I will never know what other people are thinking, so I just have to lead with what I think is best and grow from there, 'cause all I can really do is grow.
Um, I'm Leila, I'm also a senior. Me and Morelli have a lot of classes together as a consequence, as you can tell. Um, unlike Morelli, I didn't go to middle school here, I'm from Seattle, and in Seattle, everything was AP or nothing, so being exposed to IB was a really great opportunity to find a learning style that was much better than me for, than AP. Um, so I'd like to talk about some of my favorite things with IB. First, one of my favorite things with IB is learning how to teach yourself and others. Unlike rote memorization and like a lot of AP classes or traditional classrooms, um, you don't get to synthesize information as the main focus of your lessons. Whereas in IB, you get to come up with your own opinions, your own approaches to learning, and you get to talk about these things with your classmates and with your teachers. And with that, it's teaching how to be self-driven, and because of that, I'm able to explore the subjects I'm really passionate about when I otherwise wouldn't have been in a traditional lecture-based classroom. Um, so it's giving me the tools to explore the, uh, subjects I'm passionate about, um, in a deeper way than I would have otherwise been able to. Secondly, I wanna talk about the hands-on community. Like I mentioned, instead of a, a traditional lecture, it feels more like a conversation. I especially noticed this in my chemistry class, you can see a couple of pictures from there, um, where I really felt like the lectures that we were giving were more like a conversation. Sometimes it can be a little bit intimidating to stand up and ask questions when you're lost in such a large classroom environment, or when it's quick-paced, but with IB, I really feel like I can ask questions both with Mr. Baca, the chemistry teacher, but also with Morelli and my classmates around me, and it just feels like an immersive conversation, like I'm part of the lesson, where otherwise in classrooms, I may not have felt that included. Um, and with that, there's also group work, but it's also group thinking. Um, in other classes, you may just be, um, committed to doing group work and group projects, but there's less group thinking involved, and this, we're asked to synthesize and evaluate information as grouped together and come up with new ideas ourselves. Lastly, I wanna talk about the applicability. I started IB because my dream was to go to an international school in Europe or the UK, but when that dream changed, I was still able to use my skills from IB to help me in my, um, future endeavors with college. Um, one thing I definitely noticed is that it brought you up to a global standard, so yes, I could use it to be an international student if I wanted, but I could also use it to be a student within the United States or whatever future education I choose to follow. So with that, it's understanding how I learn, which helps me understand how I articulate and express my ideas in addition to understanding how I understand information. That also gives me the skills to work well with others. So not only am I learning how to advocate for myself, how to express myself, but also how to work with others in a classroom environment that may not be traditional, like future jobs, colleagues, or teachers. And because of this, I was able to incorporate my skills from IB into my extracurriculars and passions. I found that with IB, my top two most passionate subjects that I've been involved in are psychology and chemistry, and because I was able to ask questions, explore studies, talk to teachers, and be involved in the conversation of the lesson, I was really, really able to discover what I liked about school subjects, which I otherwise might not have been able to. There, in the right picture, I was dissecting a sheep brain, which was a big moment for me, realizing that I really like psychology and might be interested in psychiatry. And because of that passion, I was able to incorporate psychology into my speech and debate career, which I absolutely love. I get to be a captain this year and I'm able to share my knowledge in a more articulated and passionate sense because of IB than I otherwise wouldn't have been. So overall, it's been a really fun experience, I'm glad I was exposed to it coming from Seattle. Um, it's a great community, I get to have classes with a lot of friends like Morelli, and because of that, it just builds an awesome community where it feels like a safe space to learn, ask questions, and just explore things without, uh, feeling intimidating, so, thank you.
Questions, or did you have more?
What's that, just, um, the last thing I, I do, I do wanna say is the one great thing about, um, Loveland High School is, uh, starting this year, every student who goes through Loveland High School will have a chance to earn college credit, and I mean every student, regardless of level. Um, so every student, um, will go through, um, an I, uh, what we call a standard level, um, IB, which is just a general level class, for their English course, and at the end of their eleventh grade year, they can choose to take the exam and earn college credit as an eleventh grader, so every student in our building, um, will, will be able to earn that, and that's part of that accessibility that we were talking about before, um, and that, that's absolutely critical, so, um, that, that's something that we're also starting this year as well, so. And that is it. Questions for us?
Okay, questions, questions. Stu, you wanna start?
Yeah, um, first of all, you two are certainly articulate spokespeople for the IB program, so if, uh, Mr. Collins needs to have somebody go on the road and try to promote it like to the middle schools or maybe other districts, um, I would highly recommend these two. So I do have three questions, but they're probably questions for you. How many students are currently in the IB program here?
That's a great question, so I will tell you that right now we have thirteen hundred and twenty-five students who are in the IB program. So that means every student in our building is a part of the IB program. Um, every student, um, that we have goes through the NYPD, and then every student will be a part of our, um, DP level, which will be the eleventh and twelfth. I think what you're really asking is how many are going to go get the full diploma that we have. Uh, right now, we're at about seventeen. Um, we're at nine in the senior year and we have about eight or nine in the, in, in the junior years.
All right.
And, and so that's the full diploma program.
Yes, I understand.
Yeah.
My next question has to do with staff. Are there staff who teach only in the IB program? Or, uh, do your IB staff also teach in, in regular ed?
Yeah, yeah. So, um, our, so in IB, we're, we're, we're divided into two levels, SL, which is standard level, which is for all students, and then HL is for the higher levels, so if you think of it like, if you're used to AP, think of it like an AP class. Um, our teachers who are, teach HL also teach within the SL world as well, um, and vice versa, so, um, it really kind of creates, that way it kind of creates a, an, an understanding of what it needs to take to get from one level to the next, uh, from the SL, SL level to the HL level, so. Um, yeah, so our, our teachers are teaching both levels. We also have teachers who teach the NYPD, which is-
What is that?
NYPD is the ninth and tenth grade.
Okay.
So they're not taking the exams, but you're setting the foundation and the basis for a lot of the things that these young ladies were talking about, um, in these classes. So all, all of those ninth and tenth grade classes, we're still talking about the same things, being a risk taker, having a good communicator, um, and so those pieces, and then, so we have teachers who teach at that level, and also even up in the HL and SL levels, up in, up in the juniors and senior level.
All right, and I think you just touched on what my next question is, but go ahead and elaborate a little bit. So, how does the, um, IB program at Loveland High spill over into the regular education program in terms of how do they get other students who are not part of IB benefit from that, et cetera, and if you ladies wanna jump in with, with that as well, if you happen to?
Yeah, and so, um, and I'll just say this, I, I, I'll just kind of reiterate this piece and kind of expand on it. Um, my, our, our vision here at Loveland High School and, and what we're, what we're achieving is, every student's an IB kid. Um, so it's IB for all, every student that, that walks through the door, so if you're a student who wants to go through what we would consider general, general ed classes, which in the IB world we call SL, so the general ed classes, you're still an IB student. If you want to decide to jump and move towards the DP level, you're totally fine to do that, which is that upper elevated level, um, group of classes that the, that these, some of these ladies here are in. So, you can move back and forth, we actually have quite a few students, a lot of students, who decide, I don't wanna go full DP, I wanna go and take my general ed classes per se, but I wanna take a psych class with Ms. Ritchie, and that's all I wanna take in the HL level, and that's the only class I want to, I'll take the exam, I'm gonna get college credit for it, and then the rest of my classes are gonna be the other classes. Maybe I'm a, a student who wants to take, all my classes are normal, uh, in, in the, in the SL world, and then I wanna go dabble into a different course that, that we can go into, um, and, and go there. So, we have a lot, the ability for students to be able to do that too. Accessibility is absolutely critical, um, for here in Loveland High School, and that's why I, I'd say every student in this building is an IB kid.
I have a couple more questions, but I'm gonna go ahead and pass it off, and maybe we can talk at some other time.
Absolutely, thank you, absolutely.
So, building on Stu's questions, how many students ha- gained college credit last year out of your thirteen, twenty-five or whatever?
Yeah, yeah, thir-
How many, overall credits did the students get?
From, from IB itself. Yeah, so, last year, we did not have a DP set of candidates last year, um, it was unfortunate that we didn't have any from last year. This year, um, however, we had, um, seventy-five kids who ended up taking individual courses, right, and not necessarily the full DP level that we had. Next year, uh, uh, when I say next year, I mean by the end of this, this school year, um, that number I believe is gonna go up dramatically, and, and the reason why is, I talked about before, is we are offering at the English courses, every student as a junior will be going through one of our SL classes, so a general ed class. Every kid can go through there and they, and they get three options, you can choose not to take the exam at the end for college credit, you can take the exam for college credit at the end, or you can choose to wait and take the HL level, which will be your senior year, and even earn even more college credit. So I believe that at the end of this year, we're gonna see that number skyrocket up, and we've already started talking, Ms., Ms. Leach and myself, my coordinator, about how to get new storage for our, our tests that are coming in, and, and like find a new room, and like what that means as far as the budget, so Bob, we're gonna need to talk. But doing those kinds of things, so while that number seems relatively low overall, um, that number is gonna go up pretty dramatically over these next couple of years.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Nancy?
I was just curious, uh, for the students who come from other middle schools, or even like you, that came from out of state and didn't go through an IB program in middle school, or even maybe AP, what's the transition like for them? Is there a difference in the transition when they come to this school that is all IB or?
Yeah. Leila, would you like to talk about that, or do you want me to?
Um, I can touch on it, I mean, I had never heard of IB, 'cause I was very much though, like I said, in an AP bubble, um, but there was a lot of teachers who talked about it and like taught about it, there was a lot of resources if I wanted to learn about it, or if I was curious. When I moved here, I actually picked, um, this school over others, 'cause I wanted to have the chance to go to an IB school, 'cause I was curious what that was. Um, and it was a really good experience, and, um, yeah, I definitely, I would say like there was a lot of like awareness of it, like it wasn't something that I had to like go find, it was like people talked about it a lot and it was a good opportunity. Um, I would say in language classes, definitely, um, 'cause like once you go into them, it's like very IB-based, I definitely go to that in my Spanish classes at least, um, in my history classes, definitely, there was a lot of exposure to IB. So it didn't feel like a shocking transition or anything, it felt very talked about.
Would that be the same for someone who hadn't gone through like maybe AP?
Yeah, so, as a teacher, when I, when I taught many years ago, I was an AP teacher, I was a, so I taught AP for a very long time, I taught for almost eight years. So I understand the AP world. At the same time, I was in an IB school, and I taught a lot of the NYPD concepts at that IB school, so I understand both of those worlds. Um, I will tell you, um, that I believe, wholeheartedly, that, um, IB creates a more rounded student, because we've looked at a lot of these characteristics of a student, not just memorizing, not just, you know, regurgitating things on an exam, um, that is sent off and graded by somebody else. That I believe that the IB process, um, creates a better student, um, and so the transition coming in from one to the other, um, it's different in the terminology, I would say. But like Leila was talking about before, that, um, once the students understand and, and see what, what we're doing at the IB level, um, in, in an IB school, um, they really, really gravitated quickly, um, and, and they, and actually really enjoy it, because we have just a different kind of philosophy around these.
Yeah, I, I think it's, I think it's really great, especially listening to you talk about how it prompted you to ask a lot of questions. You know, I'm someone who's known for asking questions, and I think, uh, but I think it's how you develop, like just that, um, it's made part of you, that curiosity of everything and everywhere that you go, so I think that that is really awesome, that this IB program is, um, cultivating that, so, I think, great job.
Thank you. I would just bef- say, obviously as somebody who has a student who's here, uh, at, at the high school and who, um, that student did not participate in anything IB their freshman year of high school, back where we're from, the transition seemed to have been very seamless, she's in multiple of the NYPD level programs right now, um, setting that foundation.
Yeah.
Um, I think the biggest challenge I've seen in the past with IB has been the kid who shows up senior year of high school and decides, I wanna try to do the diploma program. There's just not a lot of time to get them there, but everybody else in terms of when they show up, I think the transition's pretty quick, 'cause it's not, even just due to some of your questions, it's less a program for some kids, it is just a way of doing business in the school, uh, way, this is how we teach, this is the profile of what the learners are that we're trying to create. It doesn't matter which class you're in, we're trying to create that foundation across all of our classes, right?
Dawn? Questions?
Um, I guess the one question I had, we've touched on, which is, that you actually were i- in a program in middle school where you learned about it, and I wondered what we could do to make sure that kids like you who are in an IB program or have that in middle school, and even elementary, 'cause we have some elementary programs, um, understand the things you wish you knew earlier, right, like how can we pass that along so that that is explained better to a student, instead of us adults sometimes talking differently?
Yeah, so I think what my middle school did a lot was, um, teaching us the IB traits, but not explaining how it was related to the IB program. Like I didn't know it was a diploma program until I got here, and like they explained it to us. So they were trying to make us an IB student, which was great, 'cause I already like knew a bunch of the traits, and like I know what it is to be like that in class. I just wasn't sure what the program was, or like how I got that diploma here, so maybe like, um, middle schools could be like taught how to, or like what it is in high school, what it actually looks like. Like you can still take classes of every kind, whether it be a diploma student, it could be, like, I took AP calculus, for example, I'm not in IB math. The, that one doesn't exist here at Loveland right now, so, I feel like you could still explain it, you can be in every ty- different type of program and still be an IB student, still be in an IB program. Like explain it before we get here, so it's a little more open to everyone.
Awesome.
So I have a couple of questions for you two. What are you doing for your extended study projects?
Extended essays.
For extended essays?
Um, my research question is, how can, um, books here that I like, it's the Liar's Crown, um, young adult series, is how does the Liar's Crown series model, um, self-esteem development in teenagers? I was just really interested by how like teenagers like myself, um, get influenced by books, so, but I didn't wanna do it in a psychology, 'cause I've never taken my psychology class, so I turned it into a literature project, being like, I'm gonna analyze some books that I like and that show self-esteem problems, and, um, analyze it for rhetoric, and be, how do they show the psychology?
Um, I was gonna sound a little odd after hers, 'cause it's very different, um, but like I said, my passion for psychology, um, I'm really, uh, into criminology and criminal profiling. Um, so I chose to do my essay on kind of like the nuance of criminal profiling and like really how accurately can we assess an unknown subject's identity with what we have? 'Cause it's not an exact science, I love all the stuff to do with, um, kind of like the psychological assumptions we have to make in the field, and like to what extent is that okay, is it reliable, and I just love, um, true crime and stuff like that, so I went with what I was interested in.
Um, the only thing I would share is my granddaughter, he graduated from a school in Portland, and IB school, fully IB and as a student, and I, she's at CSU now as, um, she's a junior now, but the process, for me to just watch her, when she would come over and spend a weekend with me and see how confident she is as a learner, and how she knows how to advocate for herself, and if there's something that she doesn't understand, or she's in emotional crisis, as often happens when you're in college, she knew exactly what to do and how to take care of herself. So, it has so many things that just help her be a, be a student, is just gonna go where she wants to go. Really neat.
I think it helps us to be like a better person, and it's a lot of types.
Yeah, that's exactly what she, it's what she has said basically, when we have our conversations, yeah.
Yes. It's really hard to like not be involved, 'cause like all of the coursework is like, like I said, like, like self-drift, driven research, and like you have to come up with questions that kind of drive the lesson, um, so it's really hard to like not feel engaged in what you're doing.
And you know, when you go on to college, sometimes as you're doing your work, they're going to ask you to pose a question that you want to know about, and it doesn't have to be related to the subject they've been teaching you, it's just what do you wanna know about, and, um, it's amazing how your knowledge from your time here will really impact that. Really neat. Anybody else have questions? Well, I totally congratulate you on my year to end, for your all, so, good luck with it, and thank you very much for sharing about the program to all of us.
To Loveland.
Yeah. I know, you always have everything that way.
Morelli's also an excellent Claire and Claire.
Oh.
She is, yes.
With a solo and, uh- Oh, and a march band, yeah.
I would say, wa- march band.
March band, speech and debate.
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah.
Nice.
That's great.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you guys.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Amazing. All right, so we have, um, a couple items for discussion, and, um, for our upcoming meetings, basically, and the first one is, um, in the reading, um, first reading of the policy BEDB, and it's the one where we talked about it our retreat, about redoing our agenda, and so you'll see in what you have in, on, um, diligent, that they're both, their red line one is there, and then what it'll look like, so I want you to make a minute, take a minute and look through that. And Laura Lee, what would you add to this, the changes you've made or bred?
Yeah, I mean, I can really quickly just talk through.
Okay.
I think it's what we discussed at the retreat, I believe, um, uh, if you look, you know, under the agenda format, number three, the first change is the removal of the, the approval of the minutes and moving that down into the consent, the action consent section. So that is now under action consent, it's letter C, approval of minutes, removing that there, under the action consent. Second part, our second big change is that the superintendent report and the board committee reports are, have been removed from public participation, section three. And those have been moved down to a new section five, listed as reports, and you see superintendent reports and then board reports. That really is, uh, I believe, oh, sorry, there's one other item, there's under the order of business, uh, work sessions, there's the line about Board of Education operational meeting norms check-in, we struck that, um, as we discussed. So the idea would be that we discuss it tonight, make sure you guys feel good, if there's any changes we need to think about making between now and the seventeenth, on the seventeenth, we do the second reading, uh, hopefully approve it there, and then this would take effect at the, in the October meetings.
Okay, do you guys have any comments, or do you remember anything differently than what we think we've remembered?
That's what I remember.
What you remember that we talked about?
Yep.
I think it'll help the public who comes to the meetings, especially like when there are school presentations. Cause it'll just flow quicker, it'll be the awards, you know, the school, and then it, you know, I I so I, I really think that's a really big improvement.
Yep.
Yeah.
And same with the approval of minutes, putting it down into the consent, so.
Okay.
Don't.
I just have a couple of questions.
Okay.
Um, the, in under the action items, there's the A consent grouping, and then A1 subgroups, and then B title slash subject, what is, what is the, being?
So, maybe I should move it up under consent, cause any act- any a- item that you're gonna be acting upon is under that, so probably A, I probably should move approval of minutes under consent and make it whatever that subgroup is, cause it would be your first subgroup, and then
Yeah.
Okay.
action item would be like something that like to, to not if we had to do something that you had to act upon, then we would.
Yeah, so I think it'll probably change to where that one subgroup is, maybe two, or is approval of minutes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because subgroups is all the various subgroups that might be there, the one that will always be there is, is the approval of the minutes, under, yeah.
Definitely.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. So the subgroups are like the things over fifty thousand.
Personnel.
Personnel, or, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Personnel.
Okay.
And I can move approval of minutes actually as.
The first one.
First one if we want, and then just put two as subgroups.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, that would be good.
Okay. And so then the titles slash subject, is that like our discussion action items?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That are added on?
Right.
Okay.
Okay, yeah.
Going along with that, I wonder if for the subgroups, it would be helpful to identify what those subgroups are?
Well, you don't know what they are unless, I mean, your normal ones, uh, you'll always have approval of minutes, the only other two that you, I wouldn't probably put donations on there, just because we don't know if we have them, but this.
Uh-huh.
And then the other one, uh, we could put personnel, I guess, if you wanna get that detailed. Um, I did ask Holter if we should add approval of minutes down there, and she did say yes, but I don't know that you wanna get that detailed where you're making your agenda. I, I, I mean, it's solely up to you guys.
Yeah, it's good.
Guess I'm not thinking about it in the context of board members as much as I am members of the public, in terms of will they know what to expect in various parts of the agenda?
Well, they're never gonna see this, they're gonna see, I mean, I'm not gonna call it subgroups, so it'll still be, one would be approval of minutes, two would be approval of personnel.
Oh, I see, okay.
Yeah, so it's, it's still gonna be listed out.
This is really just for us, then?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is just a general guide for your agenda.
Well, gotcha.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, so this is a totally new idea that I saw, what what we have here, which is that I'm wondering if we could consolidate the request for information that's on the study session, and the, I'm sorry, the request for information that's in the board meetings, and the future topics for board consideration, into just one thing in one meeting instead of a two. Because we can always put in a request for information, always, so if we just had one thing. I mean, I, I think we should still call it out, but I think just doing it once, maybe in the study session where we have a little bit more time to talk about it, than in our regular board meeting.
I would think it should still be there, if like something comes up during the board meeting that you wanna mention or think about or something like that, I feel like there should be an opportunity for it, that's my point, opinion.
We don't usually discuss the requesting.
I mean, we don't usually discuss it, we would just say, I would like to get more information on whatever happened earlier today.
I would like to get more information.
Yeah.
Well, most of the time then it comes up, we have the conversation about the thing, instead of at that separate spot, and that's why I thought it, just seeing it in writing made me go, oh, it's kinda redundant. Cause we usually say it during the discussion, if we need something. That's why. But, I mean, it's fine if it, if it actually helps, I just don't remember us really using it that often.
I don't think we do that often.
Not really.
Sometimes, I can choose.
Okay.
Sometimes, usually.
Okay, yeah, it's fine.
So what about discussion, discussion action, do we have to have that called out, or not?
No, it's, so it'll go under your action item, so it would actually be, your A is gonna be consent grouping, so anything that came forward.
Oh. Right.
And then, so then I'm gonna move under, I'm gonna move approval of minutes up to one, and then I'll n- say two as subgroups, and then you're gonna have title subject, so that's your discussion action.
Right, right.
That'll be B, that'll be B, since it's not under consent, it's a separate action discussion item, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh. Okay, okay, alright, well, we'll have to see how it all works, you know, anybody else? Okay.
Okay.
We'll see this and vote on it.
Vote on it.
On, yeah, at our next meeting. Alright, um, four point two is basically the standard action consent items that we have right now, and the ones that were posted on our, um, diligent, where just the personnel contract's greater than fifty thousand standard, I mean, uh, wasn't there a?
And I added a donation today.
Yeah, I didn't, donations, was added to it.
Yeah.
Yep.
So when I s- send out a reminder, which I'm sorry I didn't today, I had this worry when I got here, that some of you would be over at the ad building, because I didn't send out a reminder that it will be a Loveland high, um, yeah, so we're okay, I think, with this, we'll just. Alright, but what I, what I was gonna say is I'll need somebody to read the donations, um, at that next meeting. Alright, anybody have anything else to go with, um, four point one or four point two, be good? Alright, then I'm going to, um, turn this over to Stu, um, you added, uh, we, we're not gonna read that whole thing, are we? You're gonna, what are, are you gonna highlight points of it, or what?
Point.
Didn't he put, didn't he, yeah.
Casby.
Cause it's a twenty seven page document.
Twenty nine.
Twenty nine, oh, excuse me.
I was, I was gonna read it to you, but I worried.
Well, yeah.
Every single word.
So I'm gonna approach you.
No, that was never the plan.
Okay.
I'm gonna hit highlights and not e- and not even the whole document.
Okay, good. Okay, good, thank you.
Alright, so my CASB report is in three different sections. First, and if you were following the news, you probably joined with me in celebrating that the, um, legislature actually did what they said, which was not to reduce K twelve funding. That was great, and, uh, yeah, some of them had even promised, but we all know that promises sometimes don't come true, but in this case it did. Um, I also wanna share with you a little, uh, information, uh, related to a series of conversations that Bob and I had, Bob Eversol and I had with our legislators, and I'll, I'll be quick in regard to this too. So I wrote to our, uh, it was then four legislators, now it's just three, because one of the legislators has resigned and is no longer representing the birthed area. Um, what I wrote is following, is part of a communication I received from Thompson CFO Bob Eversol. As you prepare for the upcoming special session, I want you to have this additional important information about our Medicaid allotment, which is so important to many of our students and their families. Now, this is a statement that Bob sent to me, I want to bring to your attention, this is directed to the legislators, that we are budgeted to receive three million four hundred fifty six thousand dollars in Medicaid funding, that may be at risk at the federal level, which includes funds that the state matches to meet our allotment. So that went to the, to the legislators. Um, Bob and I then got a communication back from Senator Barbara Kirkmire, who represents, um, the east birthed part of our school district, and she said, would you please explain the Medicaid allotment the district receives? I was not aware that school districts received such an allotment. So Bob responded to her, uh, in some detail, which I won't, which I won't read. And then she responded back and said, thank you, this is helpful, I will dig in and find out more, uh, and then she signed it. Uh, the reason I wanted to share this with you is this is really the first important concrete evidence of our partnership with the legislators that we've tried to, um, achieve. For tho- some of you already know this, uh, Senator Kirkmire is one of the most important and influential people in Colorado government, she sits on the joint budget committee meeting. And for her to say, I didn't know anything about this, what else can you tell me, and to have one of our district employees do that, I think this just points out the importance of maintaining and improving our communication with, with legislators. Um, and just today, Bob forwarded me this from the Colorado School Finance Project Executive Director, it's just a long sentence. Um, the state knows the aggregate amount, and we're still talking about the Medicaid funding, but how it plays out down to the K twelve level, no one knows at this point, because they are just gathering county level data, which from what I understand takes a while, so I think there will be an impact, but I think we're a few months away from, from knowing what that impact is. And as a result of Bob's communication with a member of the joint budget committee, I think it provides some, provided some clarity to the legislature, and so I just wanted to share that with you and also to commend Bob for, for that. Okay, so Laura Lee, do you wanna put up, uh, the pages?
I, I just have, I was wondering, I don't know who would do it, you or, but could, could the board get forwarded this email chain you had with? Because it sounds like it has good information in it.
Yeah, I'd like to see that, Stu.
Um, I think so. If not, it's, it's really brief, um, and I could easily type it up and send it to you, so I'll, I'll either try to find it in terms of the various parts, it's communication over a period of about three weeks.
I guess for me, it's more like, what, what did Bob say about, how did he explain it when he was sending it to Barbara, I, I guess that's the piece I.
Sure.
I looks, I think I have it, so I can forward it out, I have, I have the whole string, it looks like I've.
Alright. And Nancy, if for some reason part of it doesn't come through, or you have a question, let me know, because I, I printed out the parts that were.
But you're gonna send it to everybody.
Yep, 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 I'll make sure everybody has.
Okay. Okay, um, we're gonna look at pages eight to, uh, twenty two, but some of them just have one big word on it, like finance, so just keep going. And that is the, that's the first resolution. Uh, we're not gonna talk in detail about any of these, and some of them we're probably not even going to touch on except for me to read it. This first one, uh, is offered in opposition to unfunded mandates. And the reason I'm going through this with you, I think you received, uh, an email along with the resolution, the resolution booklet from, uh, Laura Lee a couple of weeks ago, cause I asked her to send that out. If you have comments today, uh, if you've had a chance to look at them, uh, the, the information, let's go ahead and share it out now. If not, uh, I need to hear from you by tomorrow, because the fall conference begins on Friday, and we'll be dis- we'll be discussing this, uh, in a larger context. So, go ahead and go to the next page, or the next resolution or page, which is full public school funding in the event of voucher implementation. And because you, uh, some of you have your devices open and you're reading it right now, and others of you have already read it, obviously, I'm not gonna read that, the whole thing to you, uh, so that's number two. Um, moving on to number three, uh, I, I suspect you're probably not going to have reaction to number three, because it's really related primarily to rural and remote districts, which we're not, and number four, uh, to special consideration again for rural districts, so there's a total of ten, but not all of them relate to all districts. Uh, number five is one that I've been in communication, since I read this, I've been in communication with, um, Sarah Rasmussen. Um, it's entitled Fair Evaluation of Districts That Have Separate Alternative Education Campuses, and that's a, a campus like Ferguson. Um, and she's given me some input, Sarah, do you wanna just quickly, uh, share with the rest of the board what you told me, and then I will share this on, on, on Friday?
So, um, what this is stating here is that there is, um, a resolution going forward, because there are many districts that have alternative education campuses for us, Ferguson. And the, uh, performance framework for those campuses tend to bring down the overall district performance framework. So the resolution is asking that those be pulled out or removed from the district performance framework, that is not the case for us, and, um, and the other component to that is, when we have, um, alternative education campuses as a district, we need to have the same high expectations for each of our students who are, who are participating in those, um, campuses, which are, they are a part of our school district, and so, um, it's, it's our role to provide those supports. The other, um, the other component to that, that some of these districts may not be, um, engaging in, is really looking at what are the, um, what are the assessment tools that they're using in order to measure the growth and achievement of, of the students who are attending the AEC? And for us, we use iReady, because we can take, um, we can have that assessment happen three times a year, which is really helpful for our students who are participating in that program, because we always have a benchmark and data that we're looking at to make sure that they're, we are meeting their needs. So that was just a little bit of the information that I talked to, um, Stu about.
I understand.
Do you have any, do you have any questions for Sarah?
Yeah, so I remember that alternatives ha- do have a different measurements, right, um, they look at some alternative measurements to, to
Um.
try to equitably measure the same sort of thing. So this would be replacing that if it were to pass. Right, completely, and, and if it were not to pass, the idea is that we would keep what's in place already, right? Do you guys know, is that so?
I, I think that's probably correct, let, let me just clarify, these are resolutions that are, um, going to the, to the, to CASB.
CASB or what? Yeah.
And then what happens to them from there, who knows, some of them may turn into bills, that, uh, somebody from CASB is able to convince a legislator to, uh, to take to the legislature. Others may disappear because they aren't, um, supported enough to move forward, so.
So I guess another way to ask it is, this would replace what is in place for alternative education for the performance framework? And in light of it not moving forward, then what we have today would stay in place?
Yeah, and I think my understanding, if I, maybe I'm, maybe when I've read it, it's specifically looking to change how the individual alternative education campuses results impact the district's performance framework.
Yes.
Uh-huh. So we have measures right now in terms of how that individual school is acc- accredited, or where they, where they land on that performance framework, and those are al- already changed for alternative campuses, but what doesn't happen is, when they apply that to the rest of the district, they don't adjust anything.
They don't affect it.
Got it.
This is to adjust that, how it applies to the district framework, so.
Mm.
What, yeah, I thi- I mean, I took it to mean it would be thrown out, it wouldn't even be included at all in the district framework,
Right.
which I appreciate your, your thoughts on that, cause when I read through it the other day, that was sort of my thought, I was like, well, that's kinda crappy, like, we just.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, we, I think the way they currently measure them makes sense, and we want them included in our district performance framework, cause they're part of our.
Yeah. Well, and it seems, it seems, yeah, and it seems, I mean, like you said, we should, we should hold them to a high standard and work towards that standard, we shouldn't just say, oh,
Uh-huh.
you guys can't do this, we're not gonna count you, so I appreciate your, your thoughts on that, and I would, I would agree.
And I guess the only thing I would note, if that's, if this were to move forward and take on a life as you follow it, my hope is that we would ask for it to be amended to m- to match what we already have in place as the measurements for alternative education, if anything. I don't want us to throw it out.
Right.
But if we have other ways that we can prove that we are meeting the needs of those students, which we do, and we're not allowed to count those for our, our district, and only for the, the school. and we're not allowed to count those for our, our district, and only for the, the school, then that, that's an opportunity. And that's like the best I would, I would offer, is that we make it available, that we're actually measuring the same thing at the school and the district level for those campuses.
What would be helpful to me to kind of bring closure on this particular part of the discussion to an end, is if as a board, we could agree on a statement or a couple of statements that I could share at the conference. Are you following what I'm saying? So, several people have stated their own opinions or their own thoughts about this. I think it would be helpful, if possible, if we as a board could draft a board position on this resolution. And I'm not talking about anything much more than a couple of sentences. Is that something that you're interested in doing?
I agree with what Sarah had to say about it, um, and disagreeing with it and the reasons why.
Alright.
Um, so I think that's a pretty good, s- you know, statement, um, my thing is only if it goes further
Okay, yeah. Yes.
and we're talking about amending it at some point, then that's where my thoughts come in.
Okay. Sarah, I'm gonna put you on the spot.
Sorry.
So, by the end of-
Did you say?
I have like, uh-
Repeat everything, that's what you say.
By the end of the day tomorrow, could you send me a paragraph?
Absolutely.
It doesn't need to be longer than a paragraph summarizing what you said.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Alright.
Thank you, Sarah. Yes, thank you very much, sorry.
She's already thought through it, so now it's just a matter of just writing it down. Number six is another one that likely doesn't pertain to the Thompson School District, is one that was proposed by Adams County. Uh, this was in the news some time back, some of you may recall, that, uh, I believe it was the county commissioners decided they wanted to locate a mental health residential facility, perhaps for, um, childhood sex abusers, I'm not sure if I remember that part of it correctly, but, but really quite close to a, an Adams County school. And so the Adams County Board of Education is asking the legislature to consider modification of a current law, and that modification would say that, um, a facility like this could not be located within whatever distance from a school. But again, it's, it's very, um, pertinent and very particular to that one, school district. Number seven, uh, is limiting the role of the State Board in how charter school appeals to determine if chartering authority's decision was arbitrary. It's possibly one that our board may have opinions on. For those of you who've had a chance to look at, uh, that particular brief statement, which is number seven, do you have something that you would like me to report at the Fall Conference from our board? So I'll be quiet now, let you think about number seven, then we're almost done.
I would agree with that, I think it makes sense.
Okay. How about the, everybody else?
So are, are we saying, or is this saying that currently, when the State Board, um, rules to go ahead and authorize a charter, that their decision is based on that, that it's not based on that the, the, um, school district's decision was arbitrary and capricious? And this is saying that that's what it should only be, might?
I think so, I think the impression I got was that, right now, they can override for any reason.
For any, for any reason.
Local control, right.
Right. That, that's the impression I got from it, is that they could, right now, they can override for any reason, and the change would be that they can override a local-
Only if they determine it's arbitrary and capricious.
Right, right, right.
Right.
And what would the standard be to measure that?
Oh, I'm sure there's a legal standard for those two terms.
I, yeah, I mean, I think that would be to be determined.
Yeah. Okay, okay, thanks, thanks Alexandra.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think at its face as well, like the fact that this is centered on the local control part, um, I'm just really bolstering how important it is that our voters are the ones making the decisions instead of an agency that's not our voters, is important.
Okay. Is that, do we have board consensus on that, that essentially the board favors, um, possible resolution number seven, okay? Number eight, um, is very interesting, it's a problem we, we don't have. Some districts are very small, they're so small that they have trouble due to their, um, very limited number of possible school board members. They don't have enough people residing within the school district to choose from, or who are interested in running. And so this, uh, resolution suggests that they be permitted to take one person from a neighboring district, somebody who doesn't live within their school district, but is willing to serve on their school board. And, uh, I don't know that we need to necessarily offer an opinion, we, we could offer an opinion. It certainly is nothing that's going to affect us as a-
Uh, it does not say it doesn't affect us.
No, no, I said that.
Yeah, so, that's my, that's the one thing that I would add to this, is that there isn't a limitation on who could do that. And therefore this could become a, a thing that happens in Thompson. It is not limited to a, a district based off of student size or community size, and it should be, in my opinion.
Yeah, they should define the size.
That's true, that's true.
Alright.
And I would definitely, you know, just for everybody to think about, that last paragraph of this resolution talks about that if a district educates out of district students, isn't it reasonable?
Yeah.
So it's opening the door for any district that allows kids to attend from outside the district, should then potentially also be willing to have a at-large out-of-district candidate.
Right. Yeah.
And I don't know that we would agree with that, especially given, we have a pool that could meet the need.
The, the numbers just don't bear that out for us, the way that the statement is written, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. That's a good way to put it.
Okay.
Like, what I also would, I mean, again, it says that they occupy a seat in the district in which an immediate family member is enrolled as a student. So then say that student graduates or disenrolls, then does the board member have to step down?
Yeah. Right.
Yeah, so that would, you know, give this word a go for it, that would be something that would need to be clarified.
Okay. Yeah. Alright. I'm taking notes as we're talking. Alright, anybody else have a, have a thought on number eight? Okay, uh, number nine is a local control resolution, restoring local control over teacher and principal evaluation systems. This one was proposed by Saint Brain, or has been proposed by Saint Brain. And you'll notice, as is the case with a couple of others, there's a note in red at the top that this, that these two or three have been forwarded to the Fall Conference with a favorable recommendation from the combined Casby Legislative Committees. So, how do you feel about that? The, uh, I, I would say that the title of this resolution, Restoring Local Control Over Teacher and Principal Evaluation Systems, is very, it's brief, but it's very accurate.
I, I would, I would say, I would support this in that, being on the, um, they still call it the thirteen thirty-eight committee. So, just watching and listening to everybody that's trying to figure out how to, how to make Thompson fit this narrow, and it just, to me, it just seems like it just really limits the ability to be very, uh, creative or flexible based on what we need, I think this would allow, I mean, everything else we do with other school districts, we like to learn from what other school districts are doing, so why wouldn't, why wouldn't we want the same with this? I mean, with the teacher and, um, principal evaluations.
Are you familiar enough with, uh, the language in this, Nancy, to say that you approve it as it's written? I'll tell you what, I, I kinda put you on the spot, I'm gonna let you read it and see whether anybody else has a comment on this.
I mean, I guess my comment, I don't, would be, I mean, I, where it says allowing school districts to design and implement educa- evaluation frameworks that meet the unique needs, rather, I think is preferable than saying requiring,
Yes.
because some districts may not want to do it, they may wanna use the, the standard state system, so.
Yeah. State, yeah.
Alright, tell me where you are, Alexandra, in this.
Just under the, under the resolution part, that first, that first little paragraph under resolution, where it says Casby supports legislation that restores local control over teacher and principal evaluation systems, comma, allowing school districts.
Yeah.
Okay, just a second, yeah.
It's right under the-
Yeah, I, I'd love to hear it.
Okay.
I would agree with that, that the allowing piece, 'cause there's gonna be districts who will say, no, we're perfectly fi- happy with what we have, and, or if we're gonna consider it, there's a process we're gonna go through, working with our employees and everybody to make sure we do it right. But I know there's lots of districts who are trying to do creative things with how they're doing things, and the evaluation system makes it very limiting for them, and so they've had to really fight to make those changes, so yeah, I think that's-
Uh, the way I, I understand the desire to link to the student outcomes, I mean, we, we have to have some way of knowing, is the teacher effective? But I also think, I also think it's harmed the schools, um, like where there's always a persistent, constant problem. If I was a teacher, would I wanna go to one of those schools where it's, those student outcomes are really difficult to raise up? And so you, what happens is, I think, those schools lose out on some really qualified teachers, because they don't want it, they don't want, and I'm putting words, I mean, this may not, but Sue, Sue, you, you yell at me if I'm wrong. Uh, that they may be jeopardizing their evaluations, because now they're, they're going to a school whose student, um, performance is lower than the rest. And so I think that does a disservice to the students, and it does a disservice to the teachers, because they're not able to, to take what they have and flourish with it at these other schools. I mean, that's my take.
I, I guess the one thing that I kinda have that it's a greater hope than, than what could be solved with this resolution is that the standards allow us to know when we hire someone, when, that all teachers are, are meeting that standard just like our students. And what I hear from the problem is that the p- problem is that we're trying to measure something that isn't the best measurement of that. There is a way, I think, to rethink this beyond the scope of this resolution, to really find a way to measure and evaluate teachers, so that there is a way to say, all s- all teachers in Colorado have met this standard that isn't driven by whether all of the inequities that show up in the classroom. And so I think the problem, having existed now for fifteen years, that we keep trying to solve, this is better than that. But ultimately, I'd love to see something that looks at, how do we have a more consistent, fairer measuring system for educators that actually works for us? And I think throwing out what we have because it doesn't work after fifteen years is a good idea, but I'd like to see us have something that actually does work.
Alright, um, read the sentence under the word resolution, tell me Dawn, if you, if you agree with what that says.
I-
I think, I think you're taking this to a different level, which is fine, but I don't think that's the intention of the resolution.
It's not, and I, I think that as it's written, I agree with the resolution. But it doesn't go far enough.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying, and, you know, this, I think it is worthy, while people are thinking about what, what to fix, to s- look at this as a Band-Aid for what we, what we really need to fix.
Sure. S- so, i- am I hearing correctly from you that as a board, we are in support of number nine? As it's written? Yes, okay. Alright, and moving on to number ten, um, the title of this one is Non-Partisan Elections For State Boards Similar To Local Board Elections. I'll jump in on this one as an individual board member, not as your Casby representative, I am very much in favor of this. As individual school board members in districts, we don't run on party affiliation. And so why would we want our state board members to run on, on party affiliation? That's just a personal opinion, so I would be interested in what to, so basically what, what I just said supports the language of the resolution, but I'm interested in what the rest of you think.
I agree, I agree with you too.
I don't, I don't, but I'm not sure you know.
That's fine.
Okay, um, let me look, let, let me go around, and as I look at you, if you give me a thumbs up or a thumbs down, and then I can get kind of a majority opinion on this one, so Dawn, I'm looking at you first, okay? Okay, alright, that was five to one. And I will report that, that it was not unanimous. Alright, um, thank you, this, this helps me a lot.
So can I ask you just a couple sort of general questions?
Sure, I may not know the answer, but go ahead.
So, with the ones, like there's the few, I think maybe three or four, that have that forwarded with a favorable recommendation,
Uh-huh.
how, how does that process work? Like who, when did that happen, or who, or who are the combined Casby Legislative Committee members, or? Oh, does it explain that?
Yeah, it is on my page, uh, it's very-
Okay, well then I'll go back and read that. I read nine through twenty-two as I was instructed. So I'm sorry if I missed that, but what Stu has called out.
Alexandra, you, you did your homework as assigned.
Yes, I did my homework as assigned. Yeah, okay, and so then sort of related to that, when you go to the meeting this, this week, later this week,
Friday, and Saturday.
and then, so at that point, there are delegates from all of the school boards?
They, they have the opportunities, it's in delegates, yes.
Okay. Okay, and then you guys go through and kind of talk through all of these?
That's right. Each one will be discussed, uh, by itself.
And then decide which will be forwarded for, and then tha- is that, and that's what happens at the Casby in December? Is the ones that have been forwarded first are voted on by everybody, is that right?
I believe, I believe that's correct.
Okay.
There could possibly be some new ones in December, I would think as well.
And it's, yes, it's possible that some will be introduced from the floor.
Yeah.
Okay, and then after that, as you said, like some of these, the ones that are ultimately approved then may then be presented to the legislature to say, this is what we think.
Ultimately, um, the Fall Conference is kind of an intermediary step. So, approval or disapproval, primarily approval at the Fall Conference, means that, uh, this resolution then will go on to the, the conference at the Broadport
Yeah.
and be presented again and then discussed, and it's at that point that the decision is made as to, um, is Casby going to make a formal approval? And then from there, so what does that mean? It might mean talking to legislators, trying to find somebody who's in agreement with it, with the language, et cetera.
Okay, okay.
So I'm kind of, um, figuring it out as I go, because when I went last year, um, I didn't ask you guys for feedback, and I realized when I, when I was there, that some of the districts have, have done, have done, were doing right now, most of them have not. And so I thought, so when I go back in twenty twenty-five, I wanna go back as a more informed representative of the Thompson School Board, and that's what you're enabling me to, to do, to, to look a little better, as opposed to, gee, I don't know, we didn't talk about that. Okay.
Page five has the Legislative Resolutions Committee members on it, including?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright.
Thank you for doing this, yep.
Yeah.
Thank you. It's been a lot of work, it's really helpful, yeah.
Yep, you're welcome. Okay.
Alright. Item number five is, um, are there study session, discussion items? And are there some that are coming up that you want? Because we are still working on getting things established from our retreat, is that correct?
Yeah, the cabinet has been, started looking at the priorities, trying to put, figure out where each of those fall. Uh, when you get to future topic items, maybe I can, or, I, we talked about it now, you, uh,
Yeah, they did, go ahead.
A couple of things that, I know we've just, we've discussed. One of the things we need to make some decisions on relatively soon is strategic plan, and kind of which direction we wanna go.
One of the things we need to make some decisions on relatively soon is strategic plan and kind of which direction we wanna go. We can kind of go with a overall, we like the plan. We just wanna make a refresh of it and bring that, you know, to the board for their consideration or a full like strategic plan redo, right? It's twenty twenty-five, it's probably time for that. That's gonna take longer, right? If we're talking about a a full plan, we're doing a community input and we're doing all sorts of ways to gather. That's gonna take a significantly larger amount of time. So uh we're gonna talk about that a little more as a cabinet, but I think could be helpful for at least for me to get a little bit of input from you all on what do you think our direction to be? Cause ultimately, the strategic plan belongs to the district, to the board. So, you know, take twenty twenty-five, we can go through it as a team and say, here's the areas where we've met or the areas we haven't and roll it forward for the next five years. But that may not be the most appropriate way to do it. So it may be better to do with a full strategic plan process and development again. Uh but that we just need to know if that's the case. That's not gonna happen by twenty thirty or by, you know, by January. There's just no way to do that well by January. It's gonna take us a few more months. So that's one topic that we need to have some some input and that can, you really want on ones as we talk over the next um couple of weeks. Do you kind of give me your your perspective? I can, that'll help me. Uh two other items though that I do want that I think are gonna come up on upcoming study sessions slash board meetings. Uh one, we would talk about obviously the student achievement data in terms of our assessments uh results and the performance frameworks. Um discussed a little bit in cabinet today. There was a discussion that we'd like to propose of setting up some two plus twos around that achievement data prior to a study session so that we have a chance to talk in more detail in shorter, smaller groups. And then bring that to a study session for everybody's opportunity to kind of see to the the presentation and answer questions and that sort of thing. So if that works, Laura Lee and I will work on getting that, those two plus twos set up. Sarah Sarah and myself will be in the.
Okay.
The other one that I think we've is when in the middle of discussing, we're still working on is certainly there's been lots of conversations before I got here around the rule of uh kind of two groups and how they provide voice to our non-certified or classified employees. So you have kind of the the TESPA um component, then you have the CSAC group. Uh but so obviously meeting, I've had a chance to meet with both different groups. Um spent a little little bit of time with Tiffany, myself, it's with the HR folks, talking through all of the the rules, if you will, on all of that. Uh even spent some time talking a little bit today with culture around like what are the legal requirements when you start to consider an official recognized group? Um so one of the things, again, another potential for I think what culture would love to have us do would be a maybe another round of two plus twos where we can really dig into what are the legal ramifications of either decision or either direction and what does that look like? Um so that then we can come together as a board and have some further discussion about this. But we really need to make sure we understand how we if we're gonna do anything, how are we doing it right? Uh and making sure we're, at the end of the day, what matters to me more than anything is that our our employees feel like they have a voice in the seat of the table, whether that is through different means. I that's less what matters to me is that we have a place where that that voice and that seat at the table exists. Uh so that's one of the things we'd like to do is to, but that's no, that's two sets of two plus twos. We're gonna have to figure out and so I don't know that, I think we'd like to do the sta- the student achievement one by the studies, have this those two plus twos done before the study session in October so that we can do the full presentation of the study session. Uh which would mean we're likely gonna be talking about this more TESPA, CSAC conversation, maybe in preparation for maybe the November meeting, if that works for everybody. Trying to figure out how to make it all work in a short window of time. But those are two big ones that I think are gonna take some time. And two plus twos are like the best way to have more nuanced conversations before team group conversations.
Before we move on, when you talk about the November meeting, are you talking about the November, the November study session?
Yeah, that's what I was studying. Yes.
Okay, alright. I have another uh favor to ask with Dr. Heller. Would you send the statement out to the board relative to what you want us to think about in regard to the revision of STRIVE twenty twenty?
Yep, you got it. Yep, yep.
That that will help me to process that.
Sorry, what did you just ask us?
I'm sorry?
I couldn't, I didn't hear like.
I asked him if he would send out a statement to us uh detailing what it is that he wants us to think about in regard to the changes for uh STRIVE twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay. Alright, anybody else have any other items um that they want brought forward?
Um I have a request and I'm signed this on the flight. So after the meeting is adjourned, I would ask if everyone, including the cabinet, could stay because I have um uh something personal. And I think this is a good layout for it because the cabinet's here as well.
See what board have the cabinet to stay. Okay.
Alright.
I mean, you can stay too.
So listen.
Alright, anybody else? Alright, I am going to adjourn the meeting.